Hallo, alle. Hallo! Ich werde dich schnell auf die große Schiene setzen. Bam! Da bist du. Hi Lucent und hi Hades, wie seid ihr? Ich hoffe, ihr seid gut. Ich hoffe, ich bin gut. Ich habe mir ein Cappuccino gemacht, schnell. Weil es kalt ist. Die letzten zwei Tage waren schön und warm, aber heute ist es kalt. Es ist f*ckend kalt. Ich hasse es. Ich liebe es, weil ich kalt mag, aber ich hasse es auch. Weil jetzt ich frieze. Ich bin kein großer Fan. Es gibt nichts, was mich glücklich macht. Ich liebe es, ich liebe es auch, aber nur wenn ich coquettig bin, weißt du? Ich liebe, dass meine Schlafzimmer kalt sind, aber coquettig und warm unter meinen Plakaten. Das ist wirklich schön, das ist das, was ich liebe. Oh, bist du okay, Manjo? Ja. Okay, ich habe es wieder falsch getan. Ich wollte es anders machen. Was wollte ich machen? Die Mod View, ich wollte das machen. Ich wollte sehen, die Mod View. Die rote View, nicht die rote View, die Mod, die Mod View. Die Mod View. Guys. Ich hatte dieses, es war nicht wirklich ein Jobinterview heute, aber es war wie eine informationale Zoom-Ministanz mit 30 Personen und sie haben uns zur Arbeit vorgeschlagen, für die wir angekündigt wurden. Ich bin nicht... Sie sagten, wenn ihr wollt, eine persönliche Interview nachdem ihr alles gehört habt über die Arbeit. Wenn ihr alles, wenn ihr noch die Arbeit wollt, könnt ihr eine echte Interview haben. Und ich war like: "Ja, ne." Mhm. Mhm. Wie sie das erklärt, wie die Arbeit ist, wie sie das erklärt, ist wie, es fühlt sich wie eine Tabawer-Party an. Ihr startet, ihr startet euer eigenes kleinere Geschäft und dann ihr erwerbt Kunden und dann mit den Kunden, dann ihr wächst und dann könnt ihr mehr Menschen in eure Team bringen und dann nach ein paar Wochen könnt ihr sogar ein Büro, ein echtes Büro, nicht nur euer Büro im Haus und Sachen wie das. Was ist das? Die Jobbeschreibung online für die Arbeit, für die ich angekündigt wurde, ist, ihr verwendet sie im Büro, ihr leitet das Team, weil die Arbeit eine Team-Leitapplikation ist, und ihr macht die Pläne, ihr holt neue Menschen, ihr macht sicher, dass Marketing perfekt ist und Sachen wie das, wie... Die gute Dinge. Aber nein, ich muss als das, wie... Ich hätte, wie der Jobapplikation war für einen Team-Leiter, für Assistenz in eurem Haus. Ich weiß nicht, ob es eine Englische Worte hat, aber wir senden Menschen, wir sind, sie sind eine Agencie, die sendet wie Reinigung und helfen Menschen, um die Altersgruppe, um sie zu helfen. Du weißt, wie, helfen sie die Dinge, reinigen das Apartment, Sachen wie das. Sachen wie das. Nein, ich muss als, wenn ich diese Arbeit will, muss ich als das starten. Und das ist nicht die Arbeit, für die ich angekündigt wurde. Ich arbeite nicht als das. Ich möchte es nicht. Ich will, ich will mein kleiniges Bürojob und mein, mein Kaffee. Und, haben sie gesagt, wann wird das Interview? Sie sagten, nach dem großen Meeting, sie sagten, dass wenn ihr Interesse daran hat, für das Interview, ihr müsst ihnen eine E-Mail senden, dass ihr interessiert seid. Auch, auch ihr könnt ihnen die Fragen, die ihr vielleicht habt. Und ich war like: "Ja, ne, f*ck euch, ich bin nicht, ich bin nicht, nein, nicht das." Ich möchte das Interview nicht mehr. Ich möchte es nicht mehr. Es ist wie, es ist wie ein MLM. Es fühlt sich wie ein Marketing-Spiel an, wie die Schemen, wie, es gibt zu viel Filtern, sieht sehr unnötig. Es ist unnötig. Ich dachte auch, die Information, die heute passiert, würde wie, vielleicht fünf Menschen sein. Vielleicht fünf Menschen. Aber nein, wir waren 30 Menschen. Inklusive die Dame, die über die Arbeit sprach, die bereits die Arbeit hat, weißt du, die hiring. Hiring Manager, ich denke, das ist die Worte, die ich suchte. Es ist wie, ja. Ich möchte das nicht mehr. Ich möchte es nicht mehr. Es wäre okay gewesen, wenn ich, wenn ich für Menschen schützen musste. Wie, einfach vorstell dir, ich bin der Team-Leiter und einer meiner, meiner, meiner Person aus meinem Team ist krank und ich muss dafür schützen. Das wäre okay. Ich hätte kein Problem damit, weil das, das ist es. Wenn ihr ein Team-Leiter seid, müsst ihr in Aktion springen und euer Team helfen. Aber nicht, wenn es mein Hauptjob ist, das Assistenzleben zu tun. Ich möchte das. Ein paar von diesen, mindestens 15, werden sich entscheiden. Ihre Chancen sind nicht... Das ist es, das ist es. Das ist auch eine der Dinge, die ich, ich war wirklich, das war wirklich weird. Wir können alle die Arbeit bekommen. Das ist es. Wir, wir sind alle wahrscheinlich die Arbeit bekommen, weil das, das war, das war, das ist eines meiner größten Probleme. Ich würde starten, wie in meiner Stadt gibt es keine Agencie für Assistenz. Ich nenne es, ich werde es nennen, Agencie für Assistenz, weil ich nicht sicher bin, was der richtige Wort ist. Sie haben keine Lage in meiner Stadt. Ich würde die Lage in meiner Stadt sein. Ich würde die Person sein, die die Geschäftsführung in meiner Stadt auf meine selbst. Ich meine, ich habe einen Manager, der, der ist wie, er ist mein Superior und dann würde er mir ein bisschen helfen, aber ich mache das Arbeit. Er würde nicht hier sein. Er würde wie E-Mail und Sachen. Ich würde alles machen, selbst. Das ist wie, nein. Nein, absolut nicht. Ich werde das nicht machen. Auch, wenn, wenn sie gefragt wurde, über die Zahlung. Sie sagte, ja, es ist schwierig zu sagen, weil wir, wir suchen für Teilzeit und Vollzeit und so gibt es diese Basiszahlung und ihr könnt zusätzliche Kosten hinzufügen, wenn ihr, wenn ihr gut performt und dann ihr, ich weiß nicht, was das, was ist das? Ist es? In Deutsch ist es Provision. Ist es Provision in Englisch auch? Hi Arusha, willkommen in, wie seid ihr? Wie seid ihr? Ich hoffe, ihr seid gut. Mein Geburtstag kommt bald. Okay, warte, warte, wann war dein Geburtstag? Ich räume es down. Oh, f*ck, das ist, oh, das ist früh. Oh, das ist wirklich früh. Ich bin f*ckt verloren. Ich bin verloren. Ich suche, ihr könnt später einen Sub bekommen. Wie wenn ich tatsächlich eine Arbeit habe, werde ich ein Sub bekommen. Ich verspreche. Jetzt, Entschuldigung. Ich entschuldige. Ja, aber ich verspreche, ich verspreche, ich werde ein Sub bekommen, wenn ich eine echte Arbeit habe. Ich möchte meine Menschen unterstützen. Okay, ich möchte euch unterstützen. Aber ja, wo war ich? Wir können viel Emotionen machen. Ja, gehen und emotionieren. Das ist nicht etwas Gutes zu hören von einer Firma. Ich empfehle immer, wenn Menschen fragen, ja. Das ist wie, es sah, wie sie es formuliert hat, wie sie es gesagt hat, es klingt, als würdet ihr Minimum-Wage erhalten. Als Team-Leiter. Und dann könnt ihr eure besonderen Kosten hinzufügen, wenn ihr gut performt. Sie war, yes, sie war sehr, sie war sehr dodgy. Sie war sehr dodgy über die meisten Fragen. Die einzige Frage, die sie direkt beantwortet hat, war die, die Dame fragte, ich habe keine Fahrlösung. Ist das ein Problem? Und sie sagte, nein, das ist kein Problem überhaupt. Ihr könnt, ihr könnt durch Bus gehen, ihr könnt durch Zug gehen, ihr könnt, sie hat sogar gesagt, ihr könnt durch Horn gehen. Und sie zahlen 31 Cent pro Kilometer. Und ich habe keine Auto. Ich habe eine Fahrlösung, aber ich habe keine Auto. Aber das war die einzige Frage, die sie wirklich beantwortet hat. Ich denke, ihr dürft, ja, ja, es fühlt sich wirklich, wirklich sketche. Es fühlte sich wirklich sketche. Ich war wie, möchte ich das wirklich? Aber es war wirklich weird. Es war wirklich weird. Ich werde nicht für die zweite, wie das Interview, ich werde es nicht für das fragen. Nur, ja. Nicht das. Ich meine, sie haben einige schöne Vorteile. Ich kann, ich werde ihnen das geben. Sie haben schöne Vorteile, aber die Vorteile sind für mich wertvoll. Wie, diese Arbeit würde mich zerreißen. Ich weiß es bereits. Ich weiß bereits, dass diese Arbeit mich zerreißen wird. Also, ich mache das nicht. Aber auf der anderen Seite, ein paar Stunden später, mein Telefon rief. Ich war wie, oh, was ist das? Weil es nur rief, wenn es meine Familie oder wenn es etwas wichtiges ist, weil das, das sind die einzigen Menschen, die meine Telefonnummer haben. Und sie, die Dame am Telefon sagte, hey, also, ähm, sind ihr noch interessiert in dieser Arbeit? Ähm, ich war wie, ähm, ja, äh, könnt ihr bitte, könnt ihr bitte erläutern, welche Arbeit es ist? Weil ich so viele Applikations geschickt habe, ich war wie, Entschuldigung, ich schickte so viele Applikations. Könnt ihr bitte, könnt ihr bitte so nett sein und mir sagen, welche Arbeit es ist? Nein, ich habe es nicht. Ich habe es nicht, habe es nicht geantwortet. Und ich frage es nicht. Ähm, ich werde es nicht fragen. Ich bin nur, ja. Aber ja, wo war ich? Oh, wie, sie sagte, oh ja, ja, wir hatten das Job. Und ich war wie, oh ja, sicher, ich, ich, wie ich sagte, ich bin noch interessiert. Und sie sagte, oh, schön, wir möchten euch für ein Interview bitten. Ich war wie, yes, bitte. Ich war so gespannt, äh, weil ich habe bereits gedacht, dass ich nicht die andere Arbeit möchte. Und sie sagte, ja, so, ähm, wir würden, äh, es würde am Freitag okay für euch. Und ich war wie, yes. Yes. Definitiv. So, 9 Uhr am Freitag, ich habe das nächste Jobinterview. So, das wäre schön. Das wäre schön. Hi Bella, willkommen in. Klingt gut. Ja, es ist. Und auch, sie haben die Lage in meiner f*ckenden Stadt. Sie haben eine Lage. Und ihr wollt, ihr wollt wissen, ein Funfact? Der Büro, wo ich früher gearbeitet habe, äh, letztes Jahr, wo ich meine Arbeit verliert habe, mir, 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 mir. Sie haben es versucht, ich war eine Bürodame damals. Ähm, und, und die Dame schickte mir die Adresse für das Jobinterview. Ähm, sie sendeten wie die, die, die Straße, Hausnummer und dann formal die Büro von, da, da, da. Ich werde es nicht sagen. Und ich war wie, ich kenne das Adresse, ich kenne das und ich kenne das Büro, das war formal dort. Weil dieses Büro kam zu, zu uns und wir wollten uns die Wohnung verkaufen. Ich war wie, oh mein Gott, ich kenne diese Namen und Adressen. Ich kenne das. Also, ich kenne das, durch Bus kann ich leicht da kommen. Einfach. Was ist f*ckend wunderbar. Ich habe, ich habe keine Auto. Ich meine, ich werde wahrscheinlich ein kaufen, nach ein paar Wochen, weil ein Auto ist einfach ein schöner Luxus, den ich brauche. Was ich nicht brauche, aber ich will. Und es wäre so cool, zu arbeiten da. Wie, ich weiß nicht, es wäre Customer Service auch. Aber ich werde auch ehrlich mit euch sein. Diese Arbeit ist nicht für immer. Diese Arbeit ist nur ein Fülltrocken, so ich kann eine echte Arbeit finden. Guys, vergesst nicht, etwas zu trinken. Äh, weil, wie ich sagte, ähm, ich muss eine echte Arbeit finden, aber wenn es, wenn es Spaß ist und die Zahlung gut ist, ich hasse es, zu bleiben. Ich, der einzige Kriterium, den ich für meine Arbeit sucht, ist, ich möchte nicht eine Reinigungsdame werden. Ich habe nicht zur Universität gegangen, um eine Reinigungsdame zu sein. Und ich möchte nicht arbeiten in Retail, weil meine Schwester arbeitete in Retail, meine Mutter arbeitete in Retail und Bunny Bestie, Bunny Bestie's Husband arbeitet auch in Retail und das einzige, was ich höre, sind Horrorgeschichten. Und, und natürlich die TikTok-Horrorgeschichten. Ich werde das nicht machen. Das sind meine einzigen zwei Anforderungen. Also, ich sollte, ich sollte es sein, um eine Arbeit zu finden. Ich hoffe, mindestens. Und sie sind sehr klar mit ihrer Zahlung. Lass mich, lass mich nur, ähm, öffnen. Sehen, sehen. Sie sind sehr klar mit ihrer Zahlung. Sie, sie haben eine Basiszahlung von 2.250 Euro, was sehr gut ist. Ähm, aber ich denke, das ist Teilzeit. Ich denke, das ist ein Teilzeit-Spiel. Und Vollzeit bekommt ihr, es sagt, es sagt, äh, was ist das wieder? Der Mittelwert ist 3.350 Euro und dann bekommt ihr das hinzufügen. Ich meine, das ist vor dem Steuern. Ich muss wahrscheinlich noch Steuern zahlen. Aber zusätzlich zu dem, ich bekomme auch wie, Kosten hinzufügen, wenn ich, wenn ich gut mache. Sie sind sehr klar mit der Basiszahlung, was für mich wichtig ist. Weil der, der Mittelwert von 3.350 würde mir immer noch rund, sagen wir mal, 2K oder etwas, ich weiß nicht. Ich weiß nicht. Ich denke, es ist sicher, zu sagen, wie rund 2K, wahrscheinlich, wahrscheinlich mehr. Aber ich kann davon leben. Ich lebe nicht einmal 1K gerade. So. Ja. Das würde eine große Unterschiede machen. Und ich hoffe, sie nehmen mich. Wenn es Spaß ist. Ich hoffe, ich hoffe, die Menschen sind schön da. Vielleicht, oder vielleicht kennen meine Gesichter. Weil, weil, weil eine Zeit, unsere Reinigungsdame war krank, weil mein Büro auch Reinigungsservice für diese Apartments, also für die, für die Schranken, nicht die Apartments selbst. Aber vielleicht kennen meine Gesichter, weil die Reinigungsdame einmal krank war und ich, ich fing in und sagte, ja, ich kann das für euch machen und habe ein bisschen extra Geld gewonnen. Auch, vergesst nicht, etwas zu trinken, Guys. Sehr wichtig. Jobsuchen ist sehr schwierig. Aber ich habe ein Gefühl, dass wie, Bunny Bestie's Husband ist auch jetzt angekündigt. Und, ähm, ich muss. Äh, auch angekündigt. Und er hat auch ein schwieriger Zeitraum. Die Arbeitssituation in Deutschland ist jetzt schlecht. Es ist wirklich schlecht. Ich bin über qualifiziert für wie die meisten Jobs, für die ich angekündigt wurde. Aber die, die ich qualifiziert bin, wie die richtige, sie suchen keine Menschen. Sie holen keine. Das ist wie, warum? Warum würdet ihr das zu mir tun? Es ist schrecklich. Hire mich, bezahl mich gut Geld. Bezahle mich gut Geld. Ich bin zur Universität. Auch, ich muss meine Studentenzahler zurückzahlen, so. Das ist es. Bist du okay, Baby? Ja. Aber genug von meinem F*ckersprachen. Oh, wie seid ihr, Guys? Was habt ihr heute getan? Was habt ihr heute getan? Ah, danke fürs Happen. Danke fürs Happen. Mehr F*ckersprachen. Ihr wollt mehr F*ckersprachen? Okay, lasse mich nachdenken, was kann ich heute F*ckersprachen machen? Also nur das. Ewige, dieser. Ich werde bald arbeiten. Oh, auch die Dame am Telefon heute, äh, die mich für das Jobinterview invited. Sie sagte, ähm, ja, so, wann könnt ihr, ähm, wann könnt ihr beginnen zu arbeiten? Ich war wie, well, ich könnte beginnen, wie, jetzt, aber nicht Vollzeit, weil ich noch meine These fertigmachen muss. Es ist, es ist immer schlecht. Aber nachdem das fertig ist, werde ich Vollzeit oder Teilzeit gehen. Was ihr sucht, was ihr sucht, ich kann beide. Ich bin nur glücklich, eine Arbeit zu haben, um zu sein. Und sie sagte, oh, das wäre eigentlich perfekt, dann können wir dich in die wenigen Stunden trainieren. Ihr, ihr seid, ähm, noch eure Bachelor-Thesis schreiben und dann, wenn ihr fertig seid, geht ihr Vollzeit. Sie war, sie war so glücklich, dass ich das gesagt habe. Ich war wie, okay, wenn das für euch funktioniert, wäre das wunderbar. Es wäre wunderbar. Ich würde glücklich sein, diese Arbeit zu bekommen. Besonders, weil ich weiß, wo es ist und es ist so nah an die Busstation, wie nur ein fünf Minuten. Und ich würde die Reinigungsdame sehen. Sie ist so schön, ich liebe sie. Sie ist wirklich schön und ich würde sie sehen. Ich wäre so glücklich. Ne, Manjo. Aber ich bin nicht, ich sollte nicht sagen, aber ich bin nicht so müde, wie ich gestern, heute war. Ich hatte dieses, ähm, Meeting um 10 Uhr und ich ging zu Bett. Gib mir einen Sekundar, ich will mit dir zurückkommen, nur einen Moment. Oh, ich möchte das. Oh, das wäre cool. Entschuldigung, ich habe nur meine E-Mails gecheckt, weil das auf meiner Tabelle ist und es ist einfach zu tun, ähm, ja, während, nur im Chat, aber es gab mehr E-Mails, als ich dachte. Es muss eine noch furchtbare Sturm morgen in meinem Land sein. Der Regierungsbüro wird beschäftigen, die Klassen zu suspendieren. Oh, das ist, das ist absurd, wirklich? Okay, vergesst nicht, wir haben das auch, aber es ist ein Schnee, Schneidestag. Aber Sturm klingt schrecklich. Wie ein Tornado oder nur eine Sturm? Werden Sie immer noch bezahlt, wenn die Schule nicht, nicht, nicht passiert? Warum hat meine Mutter das gemacht? Ich habe nicht sogar gelaufen. Wenn ihr immer bezahlt, wünsche ich euch bester Erfolg, dass, dass die Schule abgelehnt wird. Ich, 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 ich weiß nicht, wie euer Land Sachen wie das behandelt. Ich bin sicher, dass einige andere Länder euch einfach nicht bezahlen. Also, das ist, weshalb ich es frage. Also, ich wünsche euch bester Erfolg, dass es eine Sturm... that there's a storm tomorrow and nothing bad happens, but school gets cancelled. Then you have a nice little day off and get paid. Those are the best days. I'll change setting positions real quick. Oh gosh, oh gosh. Guys, don't forget to hydrate, that's very important, okay? Oh, by the way, I just, no, not just noticed, but I noticed recently that I'm speaking with more volume than before. Um, when I just started out, I was like very shy and did not really speak. I was, I was so scared my neighbors would hear me. But now, I do not care if they hear me. I do care if they hear me sing, but I do not care if they hear me talking, because they have the TV on the whole fucking day and it's loud. Maybe your neighbor is a tiger star. Just imagine, oh my gosh, just imagine. That would be very weird, to be honest. It would be funny, but it was also weird, just. Imagine the neighbor that's like ninety-something years old is a tiger star. I mean, he doesn't have um, internet, so he probably is not, but just imagine. He would be the oldest tiger star. In my country, there's a law that protects workers from getting no payment in cases there is a major natural cost for us, uh, someone from working. Oh, I think we have the same law. I think we have the same law. I don't know, but we are safe too, we are safe as well, told us grandpa. Yeah, told us grandpa. Should have the same law too, yeah, I'm pretty sure we have that. We, we have a pretty strict and uh, big law, um, just for the workforce, like. I do have the law book for like, just work, I got, I got the law book for work, I got the law books for buildings, I got the law book, just the general law, and I think I got the general law twice, actually. And what else did I have? I do have another law book, I have a lot of law books. Not because I want them, but I, because I needed them for university. And I do not study law. Let that sink in, I'm not studying law, but still have a lot of books for the law. Yeah. But thanks to TikTok, I know now that I would never wanna study law. Never, because I get some, some law students on my for you patient, they tell what, what's going on in the, in the law schools and how much shit they have to pay and what they need and what they, it's amazing how, they have a full-on suitcase they bring to their final exam. A suitcase full of law books and other shit. Of course, it's exit. I get a lot of education from TikTok, okay? But yeah, that's like, before that, I was like, "Yeah, it sounds kind of fun." I could not really imagine what it was like. Um, because I did have to take some law courses. Some courses in my, my, my university, I had to take that are about law. But it was kind of, I mean, I was bad at it, but it was still kind of fun. And, yeah, I mean, it sounds like an acceleration program. It's, it, it, it does not sound like an, like, it depends obviously on the country. But I saw them pack the suitcase, they, they showed packing videos. And everything in that stupid suitcase were law books and other stuff you need for, for your exam, like pens, paper. It, they, they have to bring every single law they can find. There's even like a company in Germany, they call themselves Hadasak, I think. They send you, um, every month? I think every month, you get, you get the law book from them, and it's in a folder, in a really big folder. And every month, you get um, additions to it. You have to take some out and you have to put new in, and it always looks like a, like a hard project. It's amazing, in university, yes. Yes. I could never study law. There are a few things I could never study, one would be law. Medicine also, because I do not like, like, I think people are disgusting. People are disgusting, and working with people that are sick. Yeah, nah. It's not gonna happen. My mom, my mom, total opposite, she's, she's in, in medical school right now. She's not gonna be a doctor, she's gonna be a physiotherapist, but still. She, she, she's in medical school, I could never. I do not have any problem with looking at blood and stuff like that. But, um, yeah. I would not touch it. What else, what else could I not? Oh my gosh, I could never be a vet. Never, I could, that. No, no. I would never. I could never. Like, guys, I cry, I almost, and I did not really cry, but I was very close to crying, when I gave Manju to the vet for her to get sterilized. Guys, that was, like, if I could, I would have stayed and held her paw. It is sometimes easier to work with animals, and, yeah, it's, it's the opposite for me. I cannot work with animals, because I fall, I fall in love with animals way too quick. But working with people is also. I could never do a social work, like any, anything that's social. Being a teacher, um, doctor, um, nurse. What other social works are there, like, never. I could never. Yeah, that, that could never happen. But like, imagine as a vet, you have to, you have to put animals down. I would, I would not be able to, like, never, as long as it isn't something extreme, as I think it is. Yeah, it's, let's just, I could never. I could never. Or, or you have to tell the pet parents, "Yeah, I'm sorry, but your little doggo has cancer." I could never, Choco had cancer. She had cancer. And it was so bad, like, we thought she was, she did it, she, she got over it and, and was, was, was safe, but then it came back and it was so bad. I would never. Never. I could, could I work as a zookeeper, Paul Renan? I mean, Choco, let's be real, it is the same as telling family that their son has cancer. I'm gonna be very honest with you. Telling a family their son has cancer is easier for me than telling a pet parent that their pet has cancer. It, it is easier for me. Because people understand what's going on, animals don't. I mean, if it's a child, like a small child, okay, then maybe, but usually it's like, I, it, animals hit me harder than people. It's, it's, it's just like that. I don't know, what, what, there was, the, for, for the Titanic. I learned there were dogs on board and all of them died. I didn't, I do. Can I say that on stream? Please, nobody clip that. The people that died during the Titanic, eh, do not really care, but the animals? That hurt. This is why I prefer to keep it. They have seen people who easily humanize animals first. It is, I mean, I agree with you, but I'm, I'm part of the problem. I'm part of the problem, I might, I'm not dehumanizing humans, but I'm humanizing animals. I'm humanizing animals. So I'm part of the problem. I'm not, I'm not dehumanizing animals, uh, people, but, I don't know. I think that's part of me growing up in an animal-heavy surrounding. I don't know. It also doesn't really help that my model is always smiling when I'm talking. Like, even if, if the topic is very serious, look, I'm smiling. I'm not smiling real life. Um, I hope the new tracking is, um, within, within the real model brings the emotion a little bit better. Because that right now, um, not very accurate. Also, don't forget to drink something. No, we're just saying that it has, it is insane. I might be, sometimes I'm, I'm very narrow-minded, I got that from my crack grandma, the whole. Actually, my whole fucking family is narrow-minded, actually. Well, I mean, it's no secret, I'm from a problematic family. I mean, why would, why else would I have no contact with half of it? I just don't hope I don't get cancelled over the things I just said, I mean, if I get cancelled, that's, well, it's my own doing. If you ever say no family is perfect, yeah, that's, that's, that is actually very true. That's actually very true. My app, excuse me? Excuse me, I'm a tiger! Still a tiger, look, I got, my, 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 my tail has fur, I'm a tiger. Raw! Ooh, also, there's another job I won't make, uh, I won't do. I won't be working as a post, post lady. I'm not gonna deliver your fucking mail, I did that before, I'm not doing that again. Never again. One of the worst times of my life. Even though I looked very good during that time, I got a tan, I got some muscles, I looked pretty good. But it's not worth it. If you're really, excuse me? Excuse me? What you mean? Tiredness is kicking in, I don't know. No, no, I don't want it. I don't want. And when I was in, it was client support service. You mean like, like customer support, like just with the clients? Is, oh, I'm so sorry. They probably were like, "Oh, I'm better than you, answer just my questions, you have to be stupid to do your work, right?" Oh my gosh, yes, I can totally understand. One job I'm missing is being a waitress, it was so fun. The boss was, eh, but the job on its own was good, being a waitress is fun. Also, you get some tip money. Tips are good. Even though in Germany, they're not, they're not mandatory, like the USA. Basically, for an internet provider service, and you're kind of, oh. Ooh, "Oh boy, is my internet not working, why is it not working, tell me, make my internet work again", like that? I can imagine, I, mhm. They bring a waiter and waitress in my country is awful for payment. Yeah, you get, you get the bare minimum over here, you get minimum wage. Um, but you also get the tip money. So it's, it's not paid good, but it's, it's fun. It's fun. It's kind of fun. But I would not do it in this part I'm living in, because the people are very broke over here, I live in a very poor part of the country, and nobody really tips. I'm sure, but say, tip culture has made a lot of people demanding. Wow. The tip, like the tipping culture in, in the USA is insane, like thirty percent? Thirty percent at times, like, I just round up. I'm not doing percentages, if you say you, my, my, my food was twenty-five and ten cents, I'm gonna give you twenty-six, if I'm generous, I'm gonna do twenty-seven. That's that. That's that. Like, demanding a tip is insane, in my opinion. Just insane, but in, in, in the USA, they don't get paid really well, so. The problem lies with the employer, not the employees or the customers, and, but they don't understand that. They don't understand that. I'm managing, fighting with God. Like, if my waiter starts to fight with- Wie wenn mein Wartür anfängt zu kämpfen mit mir, er bekommt nichts. Im Moment startet er zu sein unglücklich und reagiert enttarnt zu meinem Tip. Er bekommt nichts. Er ist, er ist, er bekommt nichts. Du hast, du hast ein Tip, wenn ich glücklich bin, dann bist du mein Wartür. Das ist es. Wenn du einen Tip bekommst, kannst du glücklich sein, dass ich den Essen bezahlt. Ich würde auslaufen. Wenn, wenn, wenn es nötig wäre. Du sagst, aber es ist insane. Es ist insane. Wie ein Tip ist ein kleiner Bonus. Wie ein, ein Ding, den du sagst: "Oh mein Gott, danke. Du warst ein guter Wartür." Und das ist es. Wenn du nicht ein guter Wartür bist, dann bekommst du nichts. Außerdem, eine Sache... Äh, ich bin, ich bin sehr froh, dass wir das hier nicht haben. Die Wartür, die zurück zu deinem Tablen zurückkehren, wie jede drei Minuten. Ist alles klar? Hast du etwas? Kann ich dir etwas trinken bringen? Bitte lassen Sie mich nur mein Essen essen. Wie: Hi, mein Name ist Sin, und ich bin dein Wartür heute. Was meinst du, du bist unser Wartür? Wie... In Deutschland haben die Wartür nicht Bereiche. Sie, sie warten auf die ganze fucking Store. Nicht Restaurant, nicht Store. Also ja. Das ist insane. Wenn du mir nicht mein Essen und Fleisch essen lässt, bekommst du nichts. Du bekommst nichts. Das ist, das ist, das ist warum ich glücklich bin, dass wir das hier nicht haben. Wie, vergiss mich nicht, ich verstehe das, dass wir in der deutschen Region... Ja, das ist wahr. Ja, 100% stimmt. Es gibt eine Gesetzgebung, die dies möglich macht, dass sie unter Minimum-Wage bezahlt werden. Und, und sie haben das Gesetz nicht verändert für wie, ich weiß nicht, wie lange. Wenn sie das Gesetz verändert hätten, würden sie nicht, wie... Würden nicht, ähm, leben aus den Tippen. Es ist nur insane. Nur insane. Ich meine, sie, sie haben keine andere Wahl, aber das Regime sollte etwas tun. Nur sagen. Es ist insane. Es ist insane. Was ist jetzt? Okay, wir sollten ehrlich sein. Ja, die, die ganze Sache sollte... Ähm... Starten vonne wieder, wie, machen es, machen es wieder gut, wie Trump sagt, machen Amerika wieder groß. Wie können wir mit dem Tippenverfahren beginnen? By the way, look, guys, look! Ich habe mein Glas zurück aus dem, äh, Dachsauger. Ich bin aus dem Dachsauger! Ich setze euch auf eure kleinen Screen. Ihr wisst, wie das funktioniert. Wir sind noch hier, in Mexiko, für Disney making us from... Du hast 48 Stunden? 48? Ich suche einen Job bei 30 Stunden. Und das ist viel, in meiner Meinung. Wie der typische Arbeitsstunden ist 40 Stunden in Deutschland. Ähm, aber es ist, es, ähm, geht ein wenig anders jetzt. Wir werden zu wie 30 als Standard, etwas rund das. Ich denke, 32. Ähm, aber ich denke, das ist viel. Es ist viel. Es ist viel. 48 Stunden? Und da... Sind die Menschen gegen die Riche, oder sind sie auch die Armen? Das kann man nicht machen. Ja, du hast wahrscheinlich nicht das Problem, weil du glücklich bist und ins Universität gegangen bist. Ist, ist das, ist das das Ding? Warum bist du glücklich? Ich weiß nicht. Ich weiß nicht. Oh, aber ja. Ich sehe, ich sehe es gleich wie du. Die Menschen sollten nicht slavieren. Sie sollten etwas haben. Wie... Was, was tun sie mit ihren Lebensmitteln? Nichts, außer arbeiten. Ich könnte nie. Ich könnte nie. Es ist, weil ich in unserer Schule arbeite, also wir... Ah, okay, okay. Ja, das macht Sinn, das macht Sinn, ja. Aber trotzdem, es ist insane. Also bist du auf einer 40-Stunden-Woche? Das ist insane! Warum ist es so? Warum? Und dann sind die Menschen gegen... Es ist insane. Es ist insane. Wenn ich ein Boss wäre, würde ich, ich würde versuchen, meine Arbeitnehmer zu arbeiten, wie die, die 30 Woche, 30-Stunden-Woche. Ich weiß nicht. Weil dann habe ich nicht zu supervise für 40 Stunden, sondern für 30. Aber ja, es ist, es ist dumm. Es ist dumm. Die ganze, die ganze, du, du bist ein Adult, du musst arbeiten. Ich hasse das. Ich bin kein Fan. Okay. Oh mein Gott, das ist fantastisch! Was ist 27 dividiert durch 5? Haben Sie fünf oder sechs Tage pro Woche? Wie, wie, wie viele Stunden am Tag arbeitest du? Weil 27 für mich sehr gut klingt. Fünf Tage, also das fünf und ein halbes Stunden am Tag? Wenn meine Mathematik korrekt ist, die wahrscheinlich nicht ist. Aber das, das ist sehr gut. Ja, ich arbeite. Oh! Das ist wie die gleiche Zeit, als ich zwei Tage pro Woche letzten Jahr arbeitete. Oh! Das ist eigentlich sehr schön. Also hast du, also hast du ein bisschen Zeit für dich selbst, was wichtig ist. Ist wichtig. Ich sollte einen Job wie das. Ich sollte einen Job... Oh shit, warte ein Moment. Gib, gib mir einen Moment. Okay, 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 okay. Bunny Bestie, äh, accidentally videocallte mich und ich war wie: "Oh shit, ich habe das verpasst." Ich war wie, gefühlt, dass etwas passiert ist. Noch, sie sagte: "Ist das ein Unfall?" War ein Unfall. Ja, ich bin auf meinem Telefon. Ich habe eine gute Menge freie Zeit, aber auch ich habe zu, warte, aber ich habe auch zu keep track of certain things, even in my house. Äh, related. Also du machst einige, einige zusätzliche Stunden an Arbeit, die nicht beobachtet werden. Aber das ist trotzdem okay, ich denke. Ich denke, das ist trotzdem okay. Aber ja, wir müssen, warte, wo ist es denn? Wir müssen schnell studieren. Wir haben, checkt, oh, wir haben das bereits gemacht. Wir haben die E-Mails gecheckt und zwei Seiten. Wir werden heute zwei Seiten versuchen. Was meinst du? Ich bin sorry, Arusha, aber ich muss schnell studieren. Ich prob, ich habe es jetzt, äh, jetzt, weil es ist, es ist 6 Uhr und ich muss beginnen. Also, ich sehen Sie in 25 Minuten. Jetzt ist der Ratte schießend das Ding. Ich werde, ich werde mein Bestes geben, um so viel wie möglich zu schreiben. Spaß. Arusha, ich werde nie Spaß machen, das zu tun. Vergesst nicht, etwas zu trinken. Ich sehen Sie in 25 Minuten.
Break time! How are you guys? How was break? Was it as bad as it was for me? And not break, study session? It's... Not cool. It's not cool. I need to figure out... I need to figure out some translations. But I do not speak the language again. Give me the translator. Ooh, I might have found something! I have to write that down before I forget where it is. Before I... What is that? Then the orange one is the orange line. T6. Ooh, that's expensive! Something has to be wrong. How about you? Hi Arthur, welcome in! How are you? I did not, I just tweeted, I just tweeted! I just tweeted! Like just 5 minutes ago. Oh my gosh guys, I need to tell you guys, I almost got scammed! I forgot to tell you guys, I almost got scammed! There was this person writing to me on Twitter, was like "Oh my gosh, I'm sorry, I accidentally reported your account and you need to contact Twitter support." And I was like "Oh shit", but nothing happened to me, nothing happened to me. I'm gonna just finish for the... Ooh, nice! And nothing happened to my account, so I was like "Yeah, there's probably nothing happening." Like, and she's, I assume it's a girl, she said "I contacted the support and you have to write that person in support as well." And then I wrote an email, and she was like "No, no, you have to write on Discord", and that's when I made click in my head, and I was like "You're sure about that?!" You're sure about that? I blocked this person now. I googled if that is a usual scam, but it is, it is. It is. That's so insane. Can you imagine? So I googled, and then I saw "Oh, it's a typical scam", I was like "Yeah", immediately blocked, nothing happened to me luckily, but... Yeah. As they try to move you out of the main profile. Yeah. That's exactly, because she was like "Yeah, you have to send him on Discord", and I was like "On Discord? They don't have a Discord support server", because I was looking for a Twitter support server on Discord, because then I might have believed it, but there is none. So I was like "Let's ask Google." Scammers are usually trolls, so it is an idiot, I'm probably an idiot. You will be surprised. Yeah, then I was like "Yeah nah", "Let's block you, I'm not buying that shit anymore." It's just... It's just stupid. How do I get back? It didn't make any sense, that's why I... Why I was skeptical. Curious what they have done if you left them on... They just came back and annoyed you, that's like, I left them unread for a while, I was like, "Heh." And then she was like, "Hey, did you, did you say, did you contact that person yet?", I was like, "No." And, "Okay, let me know when you contact them", and then I blocked them, because I was like, "No, thank you", because then I figured out what shit is gonna happen. They just, yeah, they would just keep trying. I'll take caution making fools from her. I mean, I, do you know those videos where they track down the scammers in the scamming centers? I love those, where they notice, "Oh shit, they have been caught." I know the break time is over, but there is this one girl on TikTok, she got called by a scammer and she was like, "Uh, you want my social security number? Okay, it's three, two, one, you are live on national TV." And she, she acted as if she was a, uh, news reporter, she was like, "The FBI is already tracking down your device." It was so fun, we could immediately hang up. This person immediately hung up, was like, "Oh my gosh, no." It's just a girl at home doing that, but it was so fun! I really love that, it was so fun. Um... But yeah, I'm gonna go back to study. See you soon!
Break time! Break time, guys! Can you believe it? We're half a page in! Seen one where they get... Really? I have not seen that! If you find the video again also, please send it to Discord, I wanna see it. I wanna see it. Alright, is doing it. Yeah, I'm doing it. But I'm not a rat, by the way. I'm a tiger. Rawr! Maybe I should... Maybe I should start like, um... My catchphrase? Thank you for the RP! Welcome! And how are you? How we doing good? Uh, maybe I should get a catchphrase like "I'm not a rat, I'm a tiger. Rawr!" Oh that... Ooh, that's cringy. Ooh, that's cringy. But yeah, something like that, maybe? Okay, I'm doing good! It's just lies. It's not lies! It's not lies! It's not lies! Just the truth. Just the truth! I'm a no-sitchee. I'm getting hungry already, can you believe that? Yeah, you can probably believe that. Getting hungry! Thank you for the lurk, RP! I used my brain, can you believe that? Can you believe that? Me... Using my brain? That's just insane! That is just insane! Have you ever seen me use my brain? Probably not. Impossible! Impossible! How... How could you use your brain? Huh? How? We do have brains, they're just very smooth. They're very smooth and small. But we do have brains! Mmm... We do have brains. I just wanted to check something on my phone and now I have to update the app. Isn't that wonderful? Imagine what your brain is... That would be actually pretty cool. Okay, that would be pretty cool. Just imagine the toggle where the face is like a door and it swings open and you can see the little hamster running. That would be so cool! By the way, I told Panda and BunnyBestie about the thingy today. The job thingy. And they both were like "Yeah, that's a scam. I'm pretty sure that is a scam." I mean, it's not a scam scam because that is illegal in Germany. But it's pretty close to... Like, they probably walk on a very thin line. Intverted... Inverted... I mean, you're not wrong! But yeah, I'm gonna go back to study now.
Breakfast time! How are you guys? Friends churning with ideas drinking. I do like Pepsi too. Pepsi is better than Coke. Especially after the recent scandal. Especially after the recent scandal. I mean, it was good before, but now it's really good. Good by itself, but cola pairs better with food and make me... I'm sorry, but Coke does not get any support from me anymore. We do not support them. Oh my gosh, I finally... I finally found the fucking source I've been looking for for days! For days I have been looking for! Oh shit! Oh my gosh, I finally found it! What happened then? They reported all of their employees to ICE. And a lot of people got deported out of the USA thanks to them. And I do not support that. So I do not support Coke anymore. I know they have other brands as well. It's not just cola. I think it's a lot more, but I've not done my research on that yet. I mean, I cannot afford it anyway. But yeah. I'm not supporting them anymore. At least I try. I mean, from time to time. Maybe if someone pays for my Coke, I'm gonna drink it. But I also, I mean, anyways, I prefer Pepsi anyways. Guys, don't forget to drink something. Do you also have a to-do list or something to do? Are you busy as well? I cannot believe that I found the fucking source, gonna be blunt with it, but I mean, keep the illegal people and risk your company being shut down or your partner. I don't think they would be shut down. They are big enough to not get shut down. They just would move their factories and company to a different place. They can, they would just move. I don't think they would, I don't think they would be shutting down. They would just move. They are too big to get shut down. But when that information came out, sales dropped instantly. And not just a bit. I think they dropped quite a lot. Put some lotion on my face. I saw a TikTok that was an old lady that did not look old and she was like, "Yeah, I'm gonna use, I'm using that cream every day on my face" and I went to the store and got it. I got the off-brand one, but I'm gonna put that on my face as much as I can. I do not want wrinkles. Gonna prevent them. Page-wise, I think that's not bad. We finally found the source I was looking for! I found the source I'm looking for. They come with age and stress and also they come with bad eating habits. The worse you eat, the worse you get wrinkles. It's, it's, um, it's, it's a lot of factors combined. It's, it's, um, it's, it's a lot of factors, um, combined. A lot of factors combined. I, I don't think just age and stress. There's probably more. But age and stress are probably the two biggest reasons. And I don't want any wrinkles yet. Oh my gosh, break time is... It's already over. I don't want to. I don't want to. Uh, but yeah, I'm gonna... I'll go back to study. I will see you guys in 25 minutes. And then we can talk about wrinkles. And yeah. Never mind you. See you in 25 minutes, guys. Okay, I'm back. The thing is, there are also second-generation people who were brought into the country when they're a baby. They grew up here. Like, I mean, yes, they are illegal, but... It's not their choice and then they get ripped out of their life here, like, in, in, in that case in the USA and then they have to go back to Mexico. I think that's not quite fair. Like, they did not do anything wrong as was their parents. It, it's, it's a big, it's a big, I think it's too big for my stream. I think this, this stuff is too big for my stream, but I think Coke did a bad thing. I think, I think it was not nice. But yeah, I'm gonna go back to study.
Break time, I'mma... Break time! My neck starts hurting. I do not like that. Yeah, let's start the word... Let's start using the word... Pretend I know how to pronounce it. Okay? Pretend I know how to pronounce it. But we're gonna change the talking point now. We're gonna change now. Okay? And talk about something different. Ah shit, ah no! I got a cramp on my back. Ah, need to check that out. It's crazy. Are you okay, Minju? Minju just woke up and is running around, waiting for something, I don't know. Are you okay? Are you okay, baby? Gonna start cooking in the next study session. And then, I will... Maybe I'm gonna get one page done during the cooking. Because... Where's my calcula... Ah, there it is. Because it's not like, a lot left. Not a lot left. Um, for that page, I just have to calculate everything, which will be very expensive. But yeah. What are you guys gonna eat? Uh, I don't know what time it is for you guys. But, um... You're gonna get a snack? Are you gonna eat a real meal? Oh shit, that was too much. 530... 4... Less than... 8... 51... I should go some rolls, apples. Oooh, that sounds good. Oh wow, that's cheap. I'm calculating stuff, over here. And... I just say... That's... Less than I thought. I mean, there are some... Numbers I do not know, and have to guess, but... That's fucking cheap. That's cheap. I don't know what I would eat later. I'm gonna make some more soup. I finally got some leek, and I'm gonna make more leek soup. So yeah. How do I make that pretty? Can I make that in like... Two columns? How do you do that? No, that's still wrong, that's still wrong. I thought I did it, but no I did not. I did not. Sad. Are you okay, baby? Oh, say time again. I'm sorry that I'm not very entertaining today. I'm sorry. I try my best, I promise.
...
Big break time! I have to be a little bit quiet because the door is open and the people in the staircase can hear me. Why are they up there right now? Wait, too many people. No, I don't have people over. It's like in the staircase of the house, of the building. But the door, the apartment door is very thin. And I don't want them to hear me. Let's see, I'm gonna check real quick what I can put on for you guys while I get my food. I cooked it. It's the cooking. I hope it's good. I'll have to... I have to check what I can put on for you guys. Probably that, yeah. Hi, demon! How are you? Okay, there are no people in the staircase anymore. There are no people there anymore. And we're gonna get this and we're gonna... Get this and then we're gonna... Have to check. Why is it not working? There it is. Okay. I'm gonna put that on for you guys and I get my food real quick. And then we're gonna eat together. You just woke up? Saw that friend disappeared. Oh shit! Who is that friend? Do we know them? Do we know that friend? But yeah. Have fun watching some food while I get my food. Alright, sit down real quick. Oh, my neck hurts so bad. Oh, that's so bad. No, you don't. Okay. Oh yeah. We just... Is it better now? I'm sorry, I always forget the game music. Because I do not hear it. I put it on so quietly that I can hear my own shit. Hear my own music and stuff. Okay, time to eat! That smell? Why does it always smell so bad but taste so good? That smell? Why does it always smell so bad but taste so good? Taste, it smells like, like dirt. Too much bread. Yeah, that's too much bread. But I think that's the thing they want you to like, to do not get, do not get done on time. Oh, I think I watched this before. Too much. Well, you never grew up in Germany, Arthur. You don't know. You can't have too much bread, believe me. I grew up in a bread household. Not the good kind of bread. They ate the dark bread. That's not, that has a lot of good stuff in it, but I do not like that. Rye bread? Yeah, like, yeah, that's some, the rye bread and then they got, uh... Multicran bread and pomponico and all that dark, like the darker type of breads. And it's, I don't like it. I, I only like the, the white breads. Like with wheat in it and not rye. I like it as well. It's not, no, it's not, it's not! Was a little manchot? Am I lagging? Am I lagging, guys? Please, don't be laggy. I'm gonna check mine. Hmm, it seems? No. I'm on excellent. It should be, should be just you. Maybe you have to refresh the page. No one else speaking, I guess it's just me. Seems like it. Nothing. Yeah, it's, it, it does look very close. I don't think... This might be one of the times he fails. I would, I don't remem-, I watched it before, but I do not remember how it turned out. It's like a lot he's eating. But now, wait, now he only has the fries left, so fries go easy. You do not have to chew as much as a bread. Welcome back, loser! So I think he might, it might be a close one. I think he's got it, he got it. Look, how much he ate in just 2 minutes? Hmm, I think it's gravy. Oh, you cannot see that. Oh, I'm sorry. Um, I put it, I've... It's, uh, how do I do that? He is at 24, guys. He's at 24. Almost 25. The cutoff is because of safety reasons. You only get a small, small thing off my screen. You have 5 minutes left. 26. He still has 3 minutes left. 2 and 1/2, 2 and 1/2. 27:33. Uh, 32. Ooh, that looks good! I'm gonna be honest, if I ever open a restaurant, I'm gonna have a food challenge as well. And I will tag, I will send him a message personally, asking him to come over and try the food challenge. Just pick everyone. Of course you're... Always, always. Let's see. Ooh! Let's see, is Pegasus here? She's not. Gonna send her the link. Hi, Taulo! Hi, Taulo, how are you? Hope you're doing good. Guys, don't forget to drink champagne. Oh, that looks so good! It doesn't, it doesn't even look like much. I think I could eat bad. I don't know, that seems like something I could do. It's not Hoffheim, it's Hofheim. Mm-hmm, the O is long. I'm, oh, it's all pretty good. Um, I already finished the page. Ooh, chips and dips is good. I will do the same. I'm a Pepsi girl, yeah. Pepsi's good. The good thing about sausage is you don't have to chew a lot. Um, because it's already so dense, there is not much air you need to get out. So you don't really need to chew a lot. Just get it small enough so you can swallow. Brother, hmm! Okay, listen, I could not eat the salad because there's corn in there. That's disgusting. Regardless, it's disgusting. That's why I hate it. What's Clarkson Farm? Never heard of that. I could not do the burger. I could not do the burger. That would be too much. Do you know Top Gear? Isn't that some car thing? Is Top Gear not a car show? Yeah, car thing, nothing. I also could not do the schnitzel. Gonna be honest with you, I could not do the schnitzel. But the sausage, bratwurst, I could do. The burger looks good, yeah. It did look very good. Yeah, exactly. It's finally a burger that's wide, not tall. That's important. Let's see if we can get that shit done as well. We finished one page. We might be able to get another half page. But no promises. Also, uh, I'm sorry it's not tracking me because I'm, I'm currently in a, in a food coma. And, um, the way I'm sitting is just not camera friendly. Um... Welcome back, Taulo! What do you mean? What do you mean she gone? I was here the whole time. Oh, thank you for the hot pad! The jar's bag, yeah, the jar's bag. Thank you for the hot pad. Um, wait a second. Okay, so that monkey queen? Oh, no, I'm, I'm here, don't worry, I'm here. Even though it's not tracking, I'm here. I promise, guys, I promise. I'm here. Yeah, one page is done and we're gonna go for the second one now, well... With, let's see, my goal is half a page now, but no promises. By the way, you check emails because of the shopping. No, the emails are actually for university, those are the university emails. Uh, that's not my normal emails because I got an email address that's only university and that's the check email thing. I hear what you were eating. I was eating leek soup. That was good, very good. Probably gonna eat the leftovers tomorrow. Yeah, I'm gonna see you soon. In twenty-five minutes!
Break time! Ahhh... That means anything probably lol. Okay, I turned on the music, I saw in chat. I saw you guys in chat screaming! I'm sure that means one more day. Sushi's good, sushi is good, that's actually something you need to look forward to yet. How do you burn rice? Do you not have a rice cooker? And the fill- it... Oh god. Got the hiccups! The filling should be, um, cucumber and cream cheese, or salmon and cream cheese and avocado in both of them, actually, it's good. Don't forget to drink something guys, your fridge pickers is here. Yeah! Go for it, pickers is gonna be live on Friday! Bye bye author, I know you're probably already gone, but, "Bye bye author, I will see you soon." "I will see you soon." 6k left for free. Avocado, can I have that? Excuse you? Excuse you? I make you both, cause you both kill. Tauri the Rizler is back! Tauri the Rizler is back! Where is that on the German keyboard, is it there? How does that look without the thingy? Cause actually, ooh, I'm doing something very professional right now. Thank you for the hotpad Bella!
Hydrate up bitch!
Thank you for the hotpad! Oh, I've gotta hydrate, give me one second. Ah, hydrate, avocado makes a good coconut, but I don't like it. Oh, that's so wrong, mmm, demon, mmm. It makes it creamy and nice, I'm always here, you just don't see it. Got cat hair in my mouth. We will probably do one more, uh, study session, and then we, um, we will be done for today, I think. I did not finish the page yet, but that will happen, hopefully soon. Yeah, after all things just said. It did hurt. Like I said, we still gonna have one study session guys, don't worry. There will be still one study session. Ooh, 600 seconds, wow! 600 seconds, how long is it? 600 seconds, 600 seconds in minutes. That's 10 minutes, wow! Wow, I mean, I see you lifted the ba- uh, the timeout already, but, wow! Welcome back Lu Sun! What happened? You can, you can, you can probably see it in the mode view, just a little TC. Don't forget to drink something guys. Um... Yeah. Um... That's a big cat, of course I'm a big cat, I'm a tiger, roar! I'm a big, big tiger. Oh, I have to go back to study, I will see you guys in 25 minutes! Okay. It's me. I read all of that. I, I, I came out of this study only after reading what you guys were talking about. Yeah, Lucen is a caring mod, that's true. Lucen is a ca- a caring mod. But yeah, I don't, I didn't mind the, I, because I knew it was a joke. Um, oh yeah, the, the joke on the cat hair. I did understand it as a joke, so even you're fine. But yeah. Right, her. No, it was cat hair! Manju's hair! It was Manju's hair! The dentist yesterday hurt my mouth and now the corners of my mouth are ripped. It hurts. Really hurts. Hey, Manju is a rat. No, Manju is not a rat! She's a, she's a cute, she's a cute little baby! Guys, don't forget to drink something. A piece of, of red Pokemon. As far as take them both. No! Manju is the cutest little Manju baby cat! No, Manju. Nya. Nya. Ah, wait. Who changed? Thank you for changing the category, but who and when? I did not get, huh? It doesn't show me. She's a little baby. She's a little baby, yes! And just a cat that thinks Choco is so big. I'm Manju's pet, okay? Okay? Isn't me the baby? Manju is the baby. Manju is always the baby. Manju is always the baby. Like, for real, who changed the category? Because I'm scared for a second that that I might have not changed it in the beginning. Because it doesn't say. Am I stupid? Was me, okay. Then why does it not show me? Well, I don't care. I don't care. Thank you, Tauro, for changing it! Thank you for changing it. You don't have background music. Let me give you some background music. Burning up chocolate, so you can abuse. Nobody abuses that power over here. Oh, give me a second. I have to answer Panda really quick. I have peace without doing. The messages I got, I mean, they're still in the vod! They are still in the vod! Most of the time, I do not get notified for Ah, okay. Okay, let's talk a bit. I did one and a half, I have to write that down. I did one and a half pages today. It was amazing. Still not two pages, but one and a half, what page am I? It's better than nothing. Oh hi! Come here, Manju! Hmm? Come here! I need to work on Friday. On Friday, what, what? Guys, bananas, what the fuck? The interview is on Friday! 9am, I have to get up really early. Mango, I love mangoes. Oh, there's a You can use mango for your sushi. It goes really well with salmon and cream cheese. Oh, I'm sorry, Tauro, pineapples are not allowed, I'm allergic. Nya. Oranges, oranges are nice. I like pears. And mangoes and tomatoes, I like tomatoes. Yes, I You know the enzyme that eats flesh? That's in pineapples? Yeah, I'm allergic to that. And not just a bit. I cannot breathe even if I just Oh, I forgot to end the game. Uh, I cannot breathe if I smell it. And it's even worse when I eat it. So, no pineapples for me. That's different. Look, that's different. You have to cook the pineapple, so I can eat it. Because this enzyme, apparently, you can kill it by cooking and then I can eat it. So, if you, if you have canned pineapple, I can eat it. If you have fresh pineapple, you're gonna kill me. It tastes good for you? What do you mean? The, the canned pineapple, yes. The fresh pineapple, it does not taste like anything because my tongue starts tingling and then I don't have any taste, it just starts hurting. It's different. So no, no fresh pineapple. No fresh pineapple. Canned pineapple, fine. Make something. I mean, this time, I got a reason why I do so, why I do not eat something. And the thing is, the thing is, my mom still does not believe me to this day that I am allergic to it. She still does not believe it. Are you okay, Manju? Hmm, I guess I should Yes! Yes! Ooh, I need to, uh, give me, give me, give me, give me, give me a second. Give me a second, um... Oh no, I have to do it different. Ah, Google is stupid. It's not showing me the things I want, so it's not working like I want it to work. Do I have a pine- do I have a pineapple app? S-S-X? Asset? See? I do not. Yes, I do have a lot of ac- uh, assets. Yeah, no, there's not the asset I was looking for. I do not own the one I want. I wanted to put on, on, I wanted to put on a pineapple hat. I cannot eat ananas, no. I also do not have banana. I do not have banana. Ah, don't burn me! Don't burn me! Do not! Do not burn me! Do not burn me! I'll put you guys on the small screen again. Banana model. There will be no banana model. No banana model. Throw her in the lake, has her feet in What? I don't think you think we're talking. Be merciful. Back on the big screen you go! I need to... Perfect! Perfect! I'm a pineapple! Oh, please don't. And all times people would throw suspect wishes into legs if they drawn, well, a shame if they've flown. Yeah, that's true, that's true. I'm a pineapple! I'm allergic to myself! No, no, no rat, no rat over here, no, 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 no. And I'll put you guys on the small screen for a second. Yes, you should have the right Excuse me, I'm a tiger, okay? I'm a very serious tiger. Genito cop. If only you send this voice again, Genshin. He's not gonna lie. I mean, you can still play it, you don't have to gacha if you don't want to. I'm a pineapple! Oh, who is living pineapple under the sea? Sponge, fa, square, pants! Yeah, um... Please take me serious, okay? I need to screenshot that. I, I just need to screenshot. It's, it's amazing. I'm so happy right now! I have to send that to Panda! I have to send that to Panda! Because we were, we were also just talking about pineapples and my allergies. Oh my gosh! But you're right, I'm gonna say you soon, Tauro. I don't know why, but it's just amazing! Genshin, even though it's a gacha, I did not pay for shit with I started Genshin, but then I was like eh... I, I think I played it for one hour. But Infinity Nikki is also gacha and I played it for a lot of hours. Is he playing with thingy? Listen. I'm a pineapple, I'm very serious, okay? I sent the screenshot to Panda! If she, she she's just saying, she's just saying she killed herself. I can still audio shoot. Should I get my bag of chips? Should I get my bag of, I can, I can finish it right now. I can finish it right now. And then it should compare to me. My insides, I'm gonna kill you! What's that about pineapple, what do you have? I do have chipsticks. Yes. Chipsticks, not sticks, sticks! Chip? Sticks! Like, like, little, little little, uh, like potato sticks. Fried. Like french fries, but make them really small. I'm gonna get my chips now. I'm gonna get my chips now. Now you've done, now you've done it! I'm gonna get my chips. Like my chipsticks. Ah, shit, my back, oh no, mm! You know, look! Do you see me move? It's just, I'm not really moving, it's just my chair turning and my model is recognizing it. My back is already broken, listen. Listen, my back could not be worse. My mom had, what was it in English? Oh wow, my mom has three herniated disc? Disks? And my dad has one or two, so I'm gonna have that sooner or later as well. My back is fucked. Just saying, my back is fucked already. No chance, there is no chance. Boom, my back! Listen, I, I, I did get all the bad things, I, well, not all, I did not get all the allergies from my mom. I do not have asthma. So, that's, that's safe. But uh, I got the bad teeth. I got the bad back. I got the bad tummy. Everything bad. The tummy is from my grandma, uh, grandpa. The bad teeth I got from my dad. And my, and my mom, and the bad back I also got from my dad and my mom. Like, I'm already fucked. My knees are probably gonna give up at some point, too, like just waiting for it. I thought you were about to break your back on Oh, I crack it from time to time on stream, but the microphone does not pick it up. Gonna put on some music for you guys, since we're just chilling around. Oh, I'm gonna get some Bibinos. Because I'm obsessed. Baby no money, always have to shout. You probably will hear this man a lot in the next few weeks. Depending on how long my obsession lasts. Because you take good care of your, ah, yeah, my back, like I said, my back is already fucked, there is nothing to save anymore. I got the collapsed chest and sensitive scalp. As about it, the rest is fine. But that also sounds bad. Don't forget to drink something, so we find this cosmetic tool. For the chat. I mean that does not really, that does not really sound like, I don't know. My brother, my brother, wait. I said to scout, which means I need to clean the off, okay. Do the thing to, oh, don't worry, Baby No Money doesn't, uh, get He said that once, that he only does copyright claims on two of his songs. But, uh, we're listening through desktop our audio, it's, we are not listening to, to a specific app. So, I do not get any copyright threats because nobody will hear it. That, my desktop audio is always always copyright friendly, I already I changed it to that. Twitch doesn't even know we're playing music. It's filtered, it's filtered. Twitch does not know we are playing music. Twitch only gets what the microphone gets. That's it. Gonna crunch for you. Just for you guys. Are you calling Twitch dumb dumb? Well, I'm not calling it smart. I'm just not calling it, I'm not calling it dumb dumb, I'm calling it not smart. Big dick energy, oh my god! My friend Twitch is not even a YouTuber. Yeah. That's all true. That is all true. But it is easier to get affiliate on Twitch than on YouTube. Let me crunch your set. I need someone to crunch my back. There, there probably is some cracker there. Let me crunch. There you go, you can have fun. You want some? Take him. I should know, no, oh, I should know there are crumbs and my, microphone. Oh, by the way! I also got slight scoliosis. Almost forgot about it because it's so, so little. That is not really relevant, but I got it. I have to restart my Did you break your computer? Sounds about right. What sounds about right, huh? What else do I have? And you take care of your back. It's already fucked. There is nothing to take care anymore. I know my, let, let's just say, I know my limits. I know my limits. And, um, the best that these are my limits. Uh, is my limit. Once this shit is done, I can finally be free of the fucking desk. Don't have to, I mean, I will play the stream for you guys, but I can, I can walk around more. I feel free. Proper sleep position? Okay, so my upper body li, lays on the side, uh, while my lower body is on the tummy. I'm, I'm a spiral when I'm sleeping. Also, sometimes I cannot move because a certain cat is laying on my blanket. What's good? Ah, what's good? Nah. Nah. I think, I think, I think I'm fine. But my legs are on the, on the belly. They're like, they're not knee on knee, they're, they're flat. I want also, I want tomato salsa! Give it to me. Welcome back, Tauro! Show room? I see, light shade. Show room? I got a chip! I got a chip! Nice! No sauce? Why no sauce? Why no sauce? I've prepared food, thanks for sharing. See you soon! See you soon! Um, Lucian. Probably tomorrow. I forgot, also cat. Ooh, cat, cat is always good. Now I'm gonna Yeah, but wait, what food are you, Lucian, before you go, what food are you preparing? We need to know. She would eat the sauce. Just saying, Manju is raised properly, she's not eating any sauce. Just making you feel bad, you know? Oh no, I dropped my chipstick! What are your plans for today, guys? Probably going to sleep soon. So, what are your plans for today? Sleep, yeah, same. Shame. All those weird people who have to go to work, ew. Not me being a worker soon. If you want, you can do that, Taro. If you want, you can do that. Change schedule maybe, oh. But you need, you need to edit more of my videos, I, I thought that was so fucking funny. I lo- I love that chart that you made, it was amazing. And obviously TikTok also thought it was amazing. I loved it. Now you also got some pineapple content you can use. Is that even legal? Well, in Germany, it's not. In Germany, it is by law that you have to have 11 hours between shifts. No ruling, really? Oh my gosh. We have laws for that. I just noticed my microphone is full of grease. Uh, fingerprints. My ta- my name's Mama Tiger, I love to ca- It's not. Mama Tiger is my mom. It's my mom. Am I? Maybe you're just adopted. To get TikTok so I can see how well the video is doing. I can tell you, give me one second, I'm gonna check. The video is currently at 296 views and it will probably not go up anymore. If, after a few days, it's just stopping. Also, I recommend you guys to check out my TikTok, wait, lemme, lemme, lemme give you guys the link. Um, to check out my TikTok and watch the videos, full length. And like them. But not all at once because then TikTok thinks you're a bot. So, yeah. Go for it. Yeah, I'm leaning in to crunch it. I'm just in showroom right now. I'm leaning in to crunch it. Yeah, it does not really, like, like I said, um... You have to wa- if, if the video is new, you have to watch it full. And then leave a comment, and then... And then like, and, and maybe even share. And the more people do it... Um, the more viral it goes. Someone says EP, ah, I'm very EP, I'm very EP. Very, very EP. I have exposed some of my stuff, what do you mean? What did you expose? What did you expose? I think I might, I need to, where is that? Then tie the press. Okay, uploaded, I think I might change my profile picture. On WhatsApp. Jos, do you go that does not have the other things opening? I like to just vibe with you guys. That's really nice, you know? Just be, be here and be vibing. Let's show where the free- Excuse me? I'm what? I'm what? I mean, not too wrong, but... How dare you? How dare you? Big games in the background, but ended up eating chips. Yeah, I feel that very much, yeah, mhm. Yeah. Totally same. Tell me, eh? But wait, do you guys? Do you guys enjoy the, the vibing at the end of the stream, or do you not like, uh, is it too much? Is it too much? Picky eater, bad bag, somehow alive for the YouTuber. Uh, we, we, we still don't know how I'm still alive. We still don't know. It's the mystery of my, of a lifetime. How can I still be here? I find this is basically what I would be doing with that. Comment is not here, comment, how dare he not be near? How dare comment not be, is, comment here, comment, are you here? Except the music. Yeah. My music is, yeah, of course the music is good, it's my music. I, I put that... I put that, uh, in my, that's my playlist, okay? My playlist. My cat is sleeping, mine is also asleep. Li- the little Manjo... Is sleeping in her little, little bowl. Excuse me? Demon, excuse me? Excuse me? My taste in food is impeccable. It's just perfect. Guys, stop fucking drinking something. Excuse you? My taste in food is the best out here. Actually, but maybe you feel more comfortable now in the community. That happens, if you feel more comfortable, then you start shit talking. Now, in general, maybe you are around a lot of bad people. Who knows? I think my coworkers are robbing of me. I feel that very much. I feel that very, very much. Like I said, there was a time, I could not even say fuck. Now it's in my daily use. Do the stupid antics. Okay, yeah, me too. Let's see. I need to get ready for bed soon. Do I have anything planned for tomorrow? I don't think so. Yeah, anyway, huh? Wait a second. Well, I could not do that. I could not do that. Could push you on big screen for last minute. I fall asleep. Do you, oh my gosh, do you guys know? Do, did you, did you see the videos of, um, all the cats during Ramadan? During the morning breakfast, which is like before sun goes up? And all those cats are sitting there like... I did not, I did not sleep, I didn't... And then they're like... It's so cute, they are also confused why the humans are up that early. But yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna send you over now. Taro, do your thing. Do your thing. Where's Taro? Taro, do your thing! Do your thing! Well, your own works up, so you need to take care of them, yes, exactly. Not the thing, the other thing. Yes, that thing! Good job, uh, good job, Taro. Good job! Good job! You're the bestest Taro that, 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 out there. Best, best Taro. I will see you guys probably tomorrow. Be nice. Say hello. Leave a follow. Don't be sorry, it's alright. Um, be nice, follow rules, leave a follow. Um, say, say hello. Um, did I miss anything? Yeah, you're a good boy, you're a good boy, Taro. You're a good boy! Such a good boy! I don't know what's going on right now. I will see you soon.